Now, may I have a motion to open the board work session for the operator run schools presentations? Moved by Commissioner Highcupboard, seconded by Commissioner Chinia, all in favor. Commissioners Berkeley, Hassan, Highcupboard, Canum, Kashani, Chinia, Frank, Bondima, eight in favor, one absent. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Santa Lissis to discuss the portfolio management of the portfolio process.
Great, and I'm going to invite Angela Alvarez to open. Oh, sorry.
Hello, everybody. I'm going to invite Angela Alvarez to the table to open for us this year. Do you need something, Angela? We need the PowerPoint queued up, please.
Is your clicker working?
It's, uh, no.
Okay, while Angela begins.
Can you move forward to the renewal slide?
It's me.
Can we get her a clicker?
So, I just want to remind members of the public that this session is designed for the 13 schools that are up for renewal. So, this is for operators, as well as their stakeholders, to give feedback to the board around the recommendations. This is a process that is a routine part of the life of being a charter or operator-led school. It happens every three to five years, depending on the contract term. The recommendations are based on looking at three key areas: student achievement, school climate, financial management and governance. The other part of the process that's vital is today about hearing from the schools themselves and their communities. And so, the board is really, and I guess I'm talking to the members, the public behind me and in various rooms, are really here to listen to you before they take a final vote on December 19th. So, that's a key part of this process. And so, we're here for that part of the session. And I want to make sure that schools have enough time with the board. So, I'm just gonna start with our first school, which is Southwest Baltimore Charter School. The CEO is recommending a three-year renewal of this school. Received the developing in the academic performance, effective in climate, and effective in the financial management. With that, I'm going to invite the school to come up. Just to make sure you push the button and turn the mic on.
Good evening. I'm Ephesia Gordon-Talkin, the principal at Southwest Baltimore Charter School, and this is Erica Brockman, our executive director. I am here representing my school this evening. As you've heard, we have been conditionally, or we've been referred for a three-year renewal. And I have some new data that I'd like to present to the board and just ask you all to take this into consideration as you make your recommendation to the NCAB. First and foremost, as a school, we're very proud of the work that we do on a daily basis. And as such, we're grateful for each and every day that we have the privilege of continuing to serve our students and their families. Southwest Baltimore Charter School is one of those schools whose mission and vision already aligns with the new blueprint that BCPSS has laid out. We serve the whole child, and we cultivate leadership. Our enrichment program and student engagement structures and arts integration are among the best in the city. We are aware of, and we stand here to acknowledge, that our middle grades data, as you can see, that's where we got the developing in our academic performance, needs some serious work. That was highlighted, again, like I pointed out, in our renewal report, where the only area that we scored an ineffective or developing in overall is that category as defined by our middle schools data or our park test scores. With that being said, we also want to acknowledge that our middle grades program has not been consistent over the last three years. We've had three leadership transitions, so that was one each year, and we've had a fair share, or more than our fair share actually, of staff turnover in our middle grades. We've lost quite a few teachers. Ninety-nine percent of that turnover was actually due to health-related issues, so that was totally outside of the school's control. We know that consistency in staffing and teacher sustainability in this profession is vital, and we have considered this at length over last year, and we continue to do that this year. With that in mind, we've already begun to make changes that we think are really leading to some growth that we'd like to share here today. Some of the things that we've done so far as a team, myself, Erica, and the two other membership persons, members of our leadership team are, we've been more intentional about finding leadership that's dedicated to the vision and mission of the school, as well as to our students. We went on a nationwide search to find the right people last year, and as a leadership team, we know that we have found some great people and that we are on the path to greatness. We feel that we have a team right now who can help and support us in accomplishing greatness. We've also spent a lot of time looking at our staffing model, and again, have been very intentional about recruitment, hiring, and placement. This year, not only do we have our middle grades director from last year, who is a BCPSS ELA model teacher, teaching our fifth and eighth, sorry, seventh and eighth grade literacy classrooms. So, she stepped out of her leadership role, and she's back in the classroom to support us. So, she's teaching seventh and eighth grade literacy right now. We've also, for the first time in three years, we've had 100% of our middle grade staff return to work at SBCS. So, we feel that that's really vital, and that's really important. And I believe, and so does Erica, that that is part of the achievement and the growth that we've seen in our first trimester of this school year. So, we take the MAFS test every, well, three times, so every trimester, so that's three times for a year. We've already had our first round of MAFS testing, and Erica passed out that data that I want to present today. In our first round of MAFS testing so far this year, our middle schools, and MAFS is really a good indicator of how we'll achieve and our outcomes in park, we've realized that our middle schools, from reviewing the data, our middle schools, our middle grade students, sorry, are testing at or above their projected growth in every single subject area, except for seventh grade language usage. And we've already looked at that data, and we are making strides to correct that in some way. So, right now, we're addressing this through researching curriculum materials, having staff PD. We're looking at outside workshops, and have been sending staff to some of those, and we're trying to find experts to come in to support us in that area. My final point, I guess this evening, as Erica and I have discussed this a lot, and reflected on where we are as a school, is that we are all aware, because we're all smart people, that change is not a three-year process. It's a five-to-10-year process if we want sustainable, effective change. So, we know that we're going to hit our strides. We're really confident in where we're going as a school. We're confident in the people we've hired, and we're looking forward to greatness. But we know that we're not going to do that in three years. We cannot be successful, or as successful as we'd like to be for our kids, in three years. So, that's why I'm here this evening to ask that you extend our renewal from three years, or change it or recommend to NCAB, that instead of giving us a three-year renewal, they give us a five-year renewal, so we can continue on the path that we're on, so we can have that sustainable growth over that duration of time, so our kids can achieve the greatness that they're capable of, and that we can be there to support and push and drive that. We strongly believe in Baltimore City kids. We strongly believe in your leadership, and we're just asking you to believe in us, to give us a chance to prove that we can do this, because we know that we're on the right track.
Thank you. I have one quick question, and then we'll open it. I guess I direct this to Erica. Nice to see you, Erica. Can you remind me, I should remember this, but I can't. What year were you originally approved to be a charter, and how many renewals have you gotten so far?
We opened in the school year 2005, '06, and we've been through renewal, I think this is our third or fourth time.
So, that you've gotten two three-year renewals so far, so this would be the third recommendation for a three-year?
This would be our second three-year renewal.
So, five, six.
Let me go back and check on that, because I don't remember in the early years, Allison.
If you open it five, six, so that would be ten.
The initial, the initial.
The terms were different.
The terms were different.
Yeah. So, I think a full renewal was a three-year renewal originally.
I think that's right.
So, I think, I mean, my memory, and I'm sure it's flawed, but we can check, but my memory is I think you got what was considered a full renewal at that time, which was three years, and then in this newer process, got one three-year renewal, and then this recommendation.
Got it.
I can check that for you, though, because this is our 13th year, so three times three is nine, so something's missing there.
But it's your third, third time through this process. That was my.
I believe it's either the third or fourth, yeah.
Okay. If you could check it, that'd be great. Commissioner Highcupboard?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
And I went through this with you last time. I've been on the board for quite some time. Your math improvement in elementary school is tremendous, and it should be celebrated.
Thank you.
But with your point about not being able to make change in a three-year period, you've negated that with your math scores for elementary. Because I personally thought you had a three-year last time, based on your elementary math scores being a big concern for the whole board. And you fixed that, right? So, help me understand why it would be so difficult to continue to work on the middle school now, that you've sort of figured out the elementary academics, if you will, in the next three years. Why would that be better than having a five? Because it seems to me that that's been an Achilles' heel for you for a long time, is the middle school program, from inheriting Diggs Johnson kids all the way through. So, I understand you see some growth, but help me understand what changes you are doing currently in the middle school academic program that would make you more successful in five or three years?
We can both. So, I guess it's the process that we just, we put so much work into the SER, we put so much work into this, and I just feel like that time would be better served. I mean, this is my second year as a principal, so last year it was my first year, and I did this. I just feel like my time would have been better served focusing on instructional practices, focusing on getting our curriculum right, focusing on continuing with our culture and making the changes that we need to change, we need to make. What we've done so far for middle grades, like I said, we've asked one of our teachers, our most highly qualified teachers, to step back into the classroom. She did so, she willingly did so, so she's there. We've worked on teacher sustainability in terms of just time management and supports that teachers need. We have a new teacher support person who is really there supporting teachers. All our teachers have returned. The one long-term teacher that we had, she so wanted, so badly wanted to be there that she's with BCTR, so she's technically certified. We've also hired, so we've reshuffled our leadership team, and now we have somebody specifically focused on our curriculum. So, she's like working with teachers, looking at what they're teaching, how they can best serve our kids, how culturally relevant curriculum is. In classrooms more, we have the teacher support coach. Erica is doing the financial side and working on the administrative stuff, so I can be in classrooms more. We have teachers doing peer coaching. We're sending teachers out to workshops, regardless of budget and funding. We're sending teachers out to workshops. We're trying to get experts to come in to support our teachers. So, that's what we've done so far. We've hired a third RSD, which is a person who really focuses on culture. We went ahead last year, even with the budget cuts, and we hired a full-time social worker, because we know that we have kids who have really, really high continuous sustained trauma, and they need support outside of just academic support. So, those are some of the things that we're doing right now. So, it's not that I don't think that we won't make the progress, like I think we will. I know we're making strides. Our data is showing that we are making progress. I just feel like the progress that I'd like to make, and I think is sustainable and substantial to come back to a board and say, "We've done a great job. Like, we deserve to be here for another 10, or 15, or 20 years." It's hard to make that in three years. It's just, it's hard. And we will do it, of course, because we want to remain open. Like I said to Erica when we were walking in, we have to remain open, because that's how we're going to serve kids. So, of course, we're focused on the data, and we are concerned. I just feel like doing this in two and a half years again, because technically it's two and a half years, it's not an effective use of our time. And time as a leadership team and staff to be focused on this thing, when we could be putting that effort into instruction, and we could be putting that effort into planning authentic audiences and field work for our kids, getting them out into the community, building our parent relationships.
We're going to have to move. Erica, do you want to add anything to?
No, I think that's the crux of the whole issue here. I think that the point that we've tried to make again, you know, in the written comments, is that giving us a three-year renewal is not going to make us get there any faster. We are going to be working our butts off to improve this data. We already are. We're already seeing improvement. We weathered a very difficult three years, and a three-year renewal does not serve anybody well. It doesn't, we, we are, it's not going to put us on high alert. It's not going to make us spend resources in a way that we wouldn't have. It's a distraction from what we're doing. And I think that this begs a larger, longer conversation about what the renewal terms should be, but having gone through this, you know, multiple times, I just think that three years, sure, we're going to make growth, and sure, we're going to make progress, and sure, it's going to be better. I think we're going to show it at the end of this year. But I don't think it serves us well. It doesn't serve our students well, and it certainly doesn't serve you guys well to keep having us sort of jump through this process. So, I hope that answers your question.
Thanks for that. What I would ask, I guess directed to Allison, is I don't personally know how to interpret the, it's a complicated data chart, and I would ask that you work with Angela to interpret this for the board, and put that, factor that in, and help us understand how to take advantage of this new information. Thank you for taking the time. I'm glad you did come.
Thank you.
And just to be, just to be clear, the board is the body that's making a decision. I heard references to the new Charter Advisory Board. So, it's this board that is making the decision on December 19th, just for clarity in terms of where we are. So, the advisory board made a recommendation to the CEO. The CEO is taking the recommendation, so we now, we now have the CEO's recommendation, and it's now before the board to make a decision. The next school that's, will be coming up is Independence. They received a developing in each of the key areas, and so, the recommendation is for a non-renewal enclosure at the end of this year. I'm going to go ahead and invite the school to come on up.
You're up.
Thank you. Excellent. Good evening, Board of Commissioners. Thank you very much for speaking with us tonight. My name is Matt Wernsdorfer. I am the president of the Board of the Baltimore Teacher Network, the operator for Independence. We are here to challenge the recommendation of non-renewal for Independence. I want to be clear, however, the spirit in which we challenge the recommendation, we recognize absolutely that, at all of the tables right now, we're all, we're having a healthy debate about the quality service to our students and our city, and we appreciate the chance to engage you in a conversation. We're also going to go pretty quickly. We've got a few minutes, and so, happy to follow up with any of the points that we share. The team is going to introduce themselves, but we're going to make four core points. The first of which is the rubric that we use for charter schools faithfully executed fails to capture the value of independence to its students and the community. The second is that our students and families deeply value our service. Three, there are some, we have some challenges about the execution of the rubric. And third is, despite our vehement objection to the recommendation, we absolutely appreciate the feedback contained in the review, and will be in the paperwork you're getting, submitting an action plan for addressing the priorities identified in the, in the review. So, I'll take that first point, that the rubric faithfully executed fails to capture the value of independence to its students. First, it's important to understand that Independence was explicitly and deliberately established as an alternative school, initially to serve dropouts, kids that were just about to jump off the cliff. And what we have found is that the small learning environment, the focus on experiential learning, the focus on performance-based assessment became an environment that families from all over the city chose to, chose as a school, regardless of their students being about to drop out. We have an enormously diverse student body, a different one than we originally intended. The alternative nature of our work remains, however, and I want to give some specifics about how the rubric doesn't quite capture things. So, first, for the graduating class that's most deeply analyzed in the rubric, the college acceptance rate, the count is eight kids who got a post-secondary assignment. The number is actually 23 of the 30, so we have submitted documentation around that. I believe it has something to do with you going to the National Clearing House for counting of the post-secondary assignments, and the number is much higher. Our students go to some institutions that aren't included in that. Second, you all use the SAT and like tests to measure sort of college-bound intent, and I respect the value of that number. We have a number of students who go on to post-secondary assignments that are not requiring an SAT score. And so, I think it's pretty reasonable if they don't need to take it, they don't want to take it, and they don't. It is not an adequate measure of the college-bound intent of many of our students. The third is, and I'm not a professional mathematician, so I'm going to do my best at explaining this one. We have a really small student body. A significant fluctuation in percentage is caused by the change in fate of one or two kids. And so, when you look at our graduation rate over time, there's a serious fluctuation. The window of time, the three years in that report, happens to be the worst possible capture of the past five years. And so, for example, the previous year, the graduating class from just this past summer graduated at a rate of 85%. That's actually our best. I'm not trying to argue that our average is that high, but we nonetheless believe that the graduation trend analysis is not reflective of the larger value that we have provided to our students. So, these are some specific items backed up with some documentation around how we believe the rubric, however faithfully executed, does not capture the value. I want to turn it over now to Nathaniel to speak for the students of Independence.
Hi, my name is Nathaniel Irvin, and I'll be speaking on behalf of all my colleagues and teachers and staff at Independence High School. Tonight, you're not only going to be hearing from me, but you're going to be hearing from the family members and members of the community for our school. My name is Nathaniel Irvin. I'm a junior at Independence High School, local one, and I'm here to ask you to reconsider your recommendation to not renew our school. Although we are extremely small, school of only 140 scholars, we are a community and, in my eyes, a family. I've been at this school on all my standards since I've begun, and expectations have been met exponentially and more than I have ever imagined. The nonrenewal of our school is also the nonrenewal, is the renewal of our lack of faith in this already flawed school system. I believe that this, that we at this school, and that this school, I believe that we are this school and that this school is us. For many, if not all of us, our small school has allowed us to thrive in not only, not only academics, but also learning, learning who we are and what we want to be in life. To take this nonrenewal from us is to take away our part of ourselves and all that we have, have come to learn.
Thank you.
My name is Vasna Kruicich, and I'm representing staff and students of Independence. I've been at Independence for eight years, and I would like to actually point out a couple of things, that we have received non-effective rating within SPED department. Since the school established, and we have been recognized by the city as a school that actually has a strong record of service within this department. And in the year that we are rated as failing to focus on the success of special education, we have received an award of excellence from Executive Director of Office of Specialized Services. Additionally, in our house, inside the house assessment, Stanford 10, our special education students are actually showing a two-years' worth of growth within the literacy section. I understand that we might have some challenges that we're currently facing within the department, but we are working on it, and we are acting upon it. The second category I would like to add is the college and career readiness component. We are actually having a number of interns within the school each year. We have a strong internship program and strong dual enrollment program. CTE program, the school was not able to award certificates, just because this is the first cohort that will actually be able to receive certificates. To the lack of time, done.
So, we've got 30 seconds.
Demetra Groves-Burrell, Principal of Independent School. Absolutely recognize and appreciate the seriousness of the staff, concerns of our work. We will be submitting a thorough plan to the board, which is in your packet. We'll focus on four areas of that particular plan: college and career readiness, academic growth in literacy and math, investment in the quality of leadership, and service to our special education students. We do recognize that there are some concerns, but we are a small environment, and we definitely offer a quality education to our community, to our students, our personalized learning approach, our CTE approach, along with our performance exhibition.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Canum?
Thank you. Can you break down the, I didn't follow, the eight to 30? You said there was a discrepancy in the National Clearing House data. Where did the, do you have a list of where the students have gone? It's in the packet?
Yeah, you've actually, I believe in our documentation, there's copies of the 23 letters, so you've got that documentation.
Okay. And that's the number, I heard 30. It's 20.
30 was the class, so 23 of the 30, and the 30.
23 of the 30.
30, so 23 of the 30.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Highcupboard?
Thank you. I'm going to add my two questions together, and then you can answer both of them, if you don't mind. The first one is, you have developing on both your staff and student school surveys for a five-year average. Can you comment to that as a first question? My second question is, under the operator capacity and the leadership and governance, you also have developing, and you made no mention of that in your presentation, so could you talk to those two items, please?
Sure. I'm going to speak to this. This is my second year, go to my third year in Independence, and some of the challenges is transition. So, we had a transition from Hampden to the LaMell campus. With that transition, nine of our 12 staff members actually went on to different organizations of the school, so that's, that's a transition in itself. Throughout that transition, different student fluctuation came aboard, but with that, we still continued to increase our enrollment. So, we went from 136, actually, 119 to 136, to 150 students. So, those, those different transitionings, coming to a different environment, new campus, kind of speaks to some of that developing over time.
The operator piece is part of what we address in the action plan. It's simply about some project management work that we're already taking on as a board, so I'd be happy to go into that, but there's, yeah, yeah.
So, I asked the same question to Allison and Angela. The new data that, there's data discrepancies referenced in the documentation. If we could get some help as a board in understanding that, that would be terrific. Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you very much.
The next school community I'm going to invite up is Midtown Academy. They're being recommended for a five-year renewal. They received a highly effective in academic performance and climates, and effective in financial management and governance.
Before you begin, I just want to remind everyone that we have an interpreter in the building. If the interpreter could raise her hand, and if someone needs help during the presentation or assistance, that's the reason she's here. So, thank you for being here. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Board members, Dr. Santa Lissis, good evening. My name is Jennifer Devon, and I am the Executive Director of Midtown Academy, Inc., the operator for the Midtown Academy, Baltimore City's longest operating charter school. We wanted to take this opportunity tonight to have a little bit of face time with you, and thank you for your recommendation for a five-year charter renewal. This school is something special. As a city resident for almost a decade, I have watched the ebbs and flows of city schools, and I, having the honor of representing this school has been a true joy for me. Founded on, by a group of dedicated parents, this school continues to succeed, when many charters did not. Over the past 20 years, we have pushed and pulled to become what we are today. Dr. Santa Lissis, I hope that you will graciously accept the folder of letters from families that Suzanne Penny, our principal, will present with you, and I hope that when you see us in the future, you will smile in knowing that this is a place where city students are truly thriving. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Again, my name is Suzanne Penny, Principal at Midtown. This year is my 14th year at Midtown Academy and 18th in Baltimore City schools. Each day, my staff and I work hard to truly meet students and families where they are. The work we do is rooted in respect and understanding the importance of preparing our students to become the best version of themselves. The work is hard, and yet we always keep what is most important at the heart of all of our decisions: our students. While we may only have the capacity to serve 198 students, the impact we have on Baltimore City is important. Our success is not just measured in SER ratings or park scores. Our success is not just measured in SER ratings or park scores. It is evident when a current high school freshman comes into my office the first week of school and says, "Miss Penny, it feels so good to be back home." It is evident when a teacher runs into my office ecstatic that a student grew five reading levels. It is evident when a parent cries at an IEP meeting because she expresses that no one has ever cared about her son the way we do. It is evident when our staff comes together every year to perform at the talent show because they know the kids love it. Yes, last year, we all danced with troll hair. It is evident when a student who graduated over five years ago comes every Thursday to volunteer. It is evident when a student who began the year tantruming and eloping is now thriving in her classroom. Each day, Midtown students, staff, and families strive to do better and be better. The reason I think we all are here and do this work is the students. They are brilliant, innovative, compassionate, and many times underestimated. Our mission at Midtown is real, and the work to meet that mission is happening in our building every day. When parents asked me if they needed to come to tonight's meeting, I told them, "No, I think you can go home, help with homework, and enjoy a meal together." I also told them that if they wanted to share a letter that expressed their feelings about Midtown, they could drop it off to me, and I would deliver it. So I have for you some letters from parents for you to read at a later time. I also invite all of you to drop by Midtown someday to meet our students and staff. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for taking the time. Does anybody have any questions? Commissioner Hassan?
Just one quick question. It says here your enrollment is one ninety-seven. I'm wondering, because we all know the fiscal challenges of running a smaller school, is that what your seat cap is? And if not, what are you thinking about doing to get to your cap? And if so, are you going to be coming back to us and asking us for a seat increase?
Our current cap is one ninety-eight, and it has to do with the size of our building and our facility, having we raised it from one eighty to one ninety-eight a few years ago, and that was a real push to fit inside of our building. The one ninety-seven comes to when the count was, when the count was taken and the timeline of not being able to, students transferred in, but they didn't get counted.
And to address eventually expanding that cap, that is something that I work on every single day, along with the support from our Board of Directors and Suzanne, to find a new facility that could house us. This program is successful. It needs to be offered to more city students. So I'm working with Angela, hey Angela, and to actively look for a building, because this school matters in Baltimore City, and we'll be focusing on expanding and seeing how we can serve more students.
Thank you. We appreciate it. So I guess we're going to pause, so the next, Angela, has somebody let them know that they can come in?
They're ready.
I'm just going to ask the schools that are in their first three rows if you can move back their seats in the back so that the next set of schools can come in and take those seats.
Okay, Angela, I think we're good.
I just want to flag, I think that we have two other schools that are like outside.
So since Creative City is here...
Yeah, I just want to flag, we might need to pause.
Oh, yeah, that's cool. No, that's fine.
All right. So the next school that I'm going to invite to the table is Creative City Public Charter School. They are recommended for a three-year renewal. They received developing in academic performance, effective in climate, and effective in financial management and governance.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Marisa Canino. I'm the Executive Director of Creative City Public Charter School. I am joined tonight by Tracy Mathina, our principal, Essence Sturet, our Student Council President, and Tammy Safran, our Board President, along with many folks from our school who have come here to show support. We are grateful for the recommendation of a three-year renewal. The past five years have been filled with challenges and successes, which is clearly reflected in the ups and downs of our renewal report that you've seen. We come tonight to speak briefly about the road we've traveled so far and where we're headed next. We've had the opportunity to make some dramatic changes. Where we had serious enrollment shortfalls to start, we've now had full enrollment at between ninety-seven and one hundred percent in the most recent two years. School leadership transitions and uncertainty in our first year were quickly replaced with an effective stabilization plan and a thoughtful transition to our current principle of three years. Although we saw a suspension spike last year, year-to-date suspensions this year have decreased by fifty-three percent despite total school enrollment growing by eleven percent. We've gotten to know our school community and added new programs. A six-hundred-thousand-dollar grant through the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers program enabled us to begin our after-school literacy intervention program for students in grades two through four. Last program year, our third-party evaluator reported that thirty-one percent of program participants began at or above grade level and ninety percent ended at or above grade level. We added our community school coordinator position two years ahead of schedule. Now, our school-based food pantry served forty-three families last month. After-school programming served one hundred and thirty-eight students last month, with forty-two eating dinner daily. Last week, we distributed seventy new winter coats. Girl Scouts and Cub Scouts thrive. The Baltimore Kids Chess League estimated we get about twelve students in our brand-new chess club. Instead, we have forty plus a waiting list. We've implemented a geographic preference zone for enrollment, thanks to a waiver from you, in response to trends showing increasing citywide enrollment and decreasing neighborhood enrollment for our school over the first several years. Since then, our total enrollment of students who come from Southern Park Heights has increased. In response to higher-than-usual suspensions last year, we established a mid-year partnership with the Holistic Life Foundation. Their Mindful Moments program continues this year with expanded staffing and professional development for our staff. Mindfulness has become an integral part of our school culture. We're exceptionally proud of our first five years.
We found that we've had success in our first five years as we focused on literacy, school leadership, and the whole child. But here are three areas where we know that work still remains to be done. One, student performance on park must improve. Our students need to be proficient readers, problem solvers, and critical thinkers. Using the data to improve measurable student achievement is our most important goal, and it is being tackled on multiple fronts. For students, deep differentiation, small-group instruction, flexible regrouping, and targeted interventions allow us to meet all our learners where they are to get them where they need to be. Within our instructional program, we have prioritized maintaining the reading specialist position, increased para-education support for Title I students, and have increased student technology by two hundred percent in the last twelve months. For staff, we are strengthening our best practices beyond summer and school-year professional development as staff members are participating in outside trainings within their field of study. Two, students with special needs have not made academic gains at an acceptable rate. Administrator and staff inexperienced with specific special education processes led to some noncompliance, and that has impacted our student achievement. To remedy this, we have participated in onsite trainings with our district's special education specialists and other staff. Reallocation of staff has also been essential in implementing the more efficient, accurate, and effective procedures and practices that we expect to lead to improved outcomes for those students. Three, school climate must be enveloped in equity, unified by understanding, and sustained by safety. Our staff prioritize the need for training in racial equity, implicit bias training, and trauma-informed strategies training. This began with two full days in August, and we remain committed to continuing that work with our community partners throughout the year and into the foreseeable future. These important, immediate strategies help the students we have now, but we are also looking ahead to the next three to five years. With the input of all stakeholders and with guidance from the feedback from our SER and our draft renewal reports, we are finalizing a strategic plan that will fully address the elements of those most important things to student achievement. You have been provided with a draft so that you can get a sense of where we are headed. In the coming years, we will demonstrate that we can and we will provide the quality education that our students deserve. We cannot think of anyone better to wrap up our remarks than the President of our Student Leadership Team, fifth grader Essence Sturet.
I want to tell you about our school pledge. It starts with "we are a community" and it ends with the words, "we care, we question, we collaborate, we create." We are a community every day by seeing our friends at community breakfasts where kids say the announcements. We show that we care by helping each other when we are down. We question by asking teachers when we need help and asking questions while we are learning. We collaborate in our outdoor classrooms when we are planting and when we are planting our pollinator garden. We create in all of our classes, like when we made our clay mural after we learned about the Chesapeake Bay habitat and the animals that live in it. Creative City is giving me a good education that will help me be successful in life. I've been at Creative City since second grade, and it has given me the opportunity to be a president. I know that my education at this school will give me a lot more opportunity as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you particularly to you. Any questions? Commissioner Heidkubbert and then Commissioner Cannon?
So I just want to thank you tremendously for acknowledging where you are and where you have to go. I think that speaks volumes about your school community and understanding what your concerns are and what, where you need to grow is sort of the battle, right, is understanding how to get there. So I see you have a great climate, you have great family support, and I celebrate that as well, and obviously you got an effective on that for your rubric, but I just want to say I thank you for just the strategic plan and the process around getting the community to sort of approve it, having a Tahoe meeting. All of that speaks to creating a great school climate and culture that I know eventually your academic outcomes will improve as long as you keep pushing in that direction, but I do, I glance cursorily through the plan, it looks really good, but I'm happy to read more, but I thank you for understanding sort of where your growth areas need to be.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Cannon?
No, thank you. I appreciate Commissioner Heidkubbert's response, but at the same time, it's really hard for me to look across the board at absolute growth and trend growth and have a not-effective across the board, and then, so, and to provide a three-year renewal. And so, to me, let's just take literacy. Can I, and I have the plan right in front of me, can you talk a little bit, give me a little bit more deeper grain size of what are we going to do to have our students read at a higher level at your school?
At present, there are several things that are already in place. For example, we use the Fontes and Pennell system of assessment, and we have leveled literacy as how our students learn. A lot of the ways that, say, park or other measures are looking at reading, we're looking at the reading levels of our students and seeing a great deal of growth in, by grade level within the actual just reading literacy. But we also noticed that while we were seeing that, there may have been some places where in that, the way that we were teaching or the way that students were trying to get through the reading, it wasn't working. So a lot of the things that we've done is maybe bring in some other things. Right now, we have a specialist who comes in and works with some students using the Orton-Gillingham method, because what we've recognized is that all, one, all children don't learn the same way, which we all knew, but they also don't learn it by the same means. And what we're seeing is that where they didn't get it in one way, they're now trying to get it in another. We're hoping to be able to use that as a jumping-off part to bring in other ways to help our students. We've also done a great deal of flexible regrouping. Instead of just doing the leveled literacy and trying to meet the children at, you know, Level A, Level B, Level C, we've also regrouped our students within a grade level or even across grade levels. There are students that, for example, have been, that take park from a grade three, four, or five, but perhaps they were not reading on the third-grade level. Perhaps they needed to have a little bit more time working with the second-grade classrooms or the first-grade classrooms. That, too, has been a way that our students have been able to, at present, moving forward, trying to get what they need, maybe whether it's through gaps or otherwise. Yes, we've seen also that over three years, we haven't seen the growth that we wanted as well. The other thing that we recognize that this is the first year where we actually have a grade three, a grade four, and a grade five that are taking the test. The first year, last year, we only had one class at fifth grade. We had two classes at fourth, and we had, for the first time, third graders taking it. So as we're growing into ourselves, we're also sort of growing into understanding what these trends will look like and how these trends will grow. It's sort of like learning for the first time last year, when we've had our first group of fifth graders, what they need. I do believe that the fifth graders this year are going to benefit from the things that we learned having our first fifth grade last year. I think we are going to see the types of trends move upward that we haven't seen in the past. And I can speak to the three years that I've been here.
So I appreciate the response, and I encourage you all to keep pushing, and I'd also encourage you, there's traditional schools and other charter schools that are in this city that are doing better in getting there and have more of a track record and more experience doing it, and so just think about how to reach out and get that information.
We have, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks a lot. And thank you to all your members of your community that came as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We're actually going to go to Hampstead Hill as the next school, so if I can have the presentation, just kind of quickly update it. Hampstead Hill is recommended for a five-year renewal. They received a highly effective in each of the three categories.
You ready?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Matt Hornbeck, and for fifteen years, I've had the best job in the world as the Principal at Hampstead Hill Academy. I want to recognize the hard, smart work of more than one hundred HHA staff who believe in the power of restorative practices, truly know our students, plan and teach amazing lessons, and based on actual student data, reflect and adjust their expert practice. In particular, I thank my partner in the work, Laura Doherty, and her colleagues at BCP, especially John McGill and Angela Scott, as well as the outstanding leadership team at HHA. I also want to commend SER Manager Brianna Kaufman and her team. They provide the most credible, useful, formative, and summative analysis of the work taking place at schools. Schools need more of that critical friend feedback. At HHA, we use direct instruction to teach students how to read, and we have for more than twenty years. And we use other research-based programs, including Core Knowledge, Singapore Math, iQuest, Dreambox, and Springboard, to give students the foundational and rich curriculum experiences they need to succeed in the best high schools as well, as well as their chosen college and/or career. To paraphrase a former Teacher of the Year, "DI is the meal students need every day, then I can make sure they get the appetizers and desserts." There's no substitute for putting great, research-based curriculum in the hands of super-teachers. Our achievement highlights include being number one in the city on park in reading for African-American students in grades three to five, and number two for low-income students. We're number one for Hispanic eighth graders passing the park algebra test and outperform the city in every, city average in every category in reading and math. In terms of growth from two thousand fifteen to seventeen, we are number one in third through eighth grade reading. And that's just test scores. The really interesting work is the writing in student portfolios, in drama class, in band, in orchestra, in art, in cooking class, in the research taking place in the library, National History Day projects, and in environmental science class. This last year has been tough. The murders, violence, and shootings, talk of a thousand teachers, guidance counselors, and librarians being laid off, more than a dozen rallies to stem budget cuts, the undercounting of our poor immigrant students, the loss of a quarter million dollars in Title I funds, ICE targeting law-abiding parents and deporting them, the false arrest and detention of a parent at our eighth-grade closing, the freeze on hiring assistant principals and para-professionals, and the drop in district-wide enrollment of more than eight hundred students have left emotional, physical, financial, and instructional holes in our community. In spite of these challenges, challenges faced in intensely varying degrees by every school, every teacher, and every principal in the city, there's great teaching and learning happening at HHA and inside every city school. I'm grateful to work with such talented people who earn the trust of Baltimore students and their parents every day. We're pleased with the district's recommendation to renew BCP's contract to operate...
Good evening, school board commissioners. My name is Angela Scott. This evening, I'd like to give you two perspectives regarding Hampstead Hill Academy. One as a parent and another as the operator staff. First and foremost, I'm a Hampstead Hill parent. I have two daughters, an eighth grader and a sixth grader, and both have been at Hampstead Hill since kindergarten. One reason my husband and I chose Hampstead Hill was because of its diverse student and teacher populations. In a city like Baltimore, where the population continues to grow more diverse, we had a desire to expose our children to cultural differences at an early age to prepare them for their future world. This diversity has allowed my children to make friends with some amazing students, whether via Girl Scouts, Hampstead Hill Players Theater Group, or in their daily classes and group activities. Hampstead Hill has set high academic standards for its student body. Both of my girls have scored fives on the park and participated in the Gifted and Talented Program. Overall, the teachers and staff at Hampstead Hill have created an environment in which all students can meet or exceed academic expectations. This is where my second perspective comes in, as operator staff. I've worked for the Baltimore Curriculum Project for 16 years. I've seen tremendous growth within the BCP organization as well as our schools. Our professional development gives teachers not only the skills to teach effectively, but provide strategies to handle behavior and social situations. We strive to meet the needs of students, families, and staff every day. As a charter operator, BCP provides office supports for our schools in HR personnel, procurement, accounting, and finance, academics, marketing, and fundraising. Having the support of such an operator allows our principals and staff to focus on ensuring their school's success each year. In conclusion, my husband and I chose to send our children to a BCP school because of the quality of staff and the trust that we have in the school and the operator. Hampstead Hill and BCP have created a partnership that focuses on educating Baltimore city children every day. This partnership is one that I wholeheartedly believe in and is one that is sure to continue for years to come. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Laura Doherty. I'm the president of the Baltimore Curriculum Project. I'm very happy to be here tonight with my colleagues to talk about Hampstead Hill. We three have worked together for a very long time and we are all in agreement that we are most fortunate to be able to do this work together. And I want to thank you sincerely for the opportunity to do so. We do our best to support this school in all the ways that Angela mentioned, and under Matt's leadership, Hampstead Hill has developed into a school that we can all be proud of. However, as Matt points out at every data meeting, every staff meeting, and well, pretty much in every conversation that we have, we're not good enough yet. We have work to do. But that consistent pushing to provide more opportunities for our students has led to, for example, a really great Gifted and Talented Program, honors classes for all of our middle school students, and a serious concentrated effort to ensure that every student is achieving at a high level. And while we are proud that relatively speaking, our subgroups do quite well, there is a lot of room for growth. So, we agree completely with the recommendation that Hampstead Hill get a five-year renewal, and we look forward to answering any questions you have.
Well, you nailed that seven minutes. Any questions, comments? Thank you for taking the time and nice job.
Sounds like good job. Thank you.
Yeah. Angela, is, are we going to hear from city neighbors, do you think?
No, I think we're back and forth about whether or not they're going to come, so I think they've decided not to.
So, they're not going to present? Okay, Angela, I think it's okay.
Okay. The next school that I'm going to invite to the table is Empowerment Academy. They're recommended for a five-year renewal. They received effective in each of the three key categories.
My name is Cecil Payton and I am the president of the Board of Directors of Empowerment Academy, and we're pleased to be here tonight. And I have with me our new principal, Mrs. Ashley Moore, our two parents, Mrs. Cole and Mrs. Carson, and a student, DeAndre Wright. Empowerment Academy, we're in our 14th year of operation and we are pleased to know that we've been recommended for renewal. Our students are doing extremely well, and we're so excited because we have a new principal this year who came in and hit the ground running. And so, I'm going to turn it over to her and ask Mrs. Moore if she would elaborate further.
Thank you. Thank you to our CEO, Dr. Santalisis, and our school board of commissioners for having us here today. As Dr. Payton mentioned, I am the principal of the Empowerment Academy, and I would like to acknowledge our board members who are with us today, as well as our parents and students. And Mrs. Winston, our founder. I am delighted to be here today to thank you for recommending our school for a five-year renewal so I can continue to hit the ground running and ensure that through the next five years, we will continue to work towards our mission, which is literacy through the arts. By exposing our students to various disciplines of art as well as art forms that will be integrated into daily instruction. Our goal is that this mission will continue to contribute to our students' academic and holistic growth. We will continue to increase our rigorous instruction so that our students can continue to attend our Baltimore City Public School, High Schools, which are Polytechnic Institute, as well as the Baltimore School for the Arts. I'm excited about our program and what we have to offer Baltimore City Public School students, and what better way to say that than to hear from one of our students, Mr. DeAndre Wright?
Good evening, everyone. My name's DeAndre Wright and I'm currently an eighth-grade student attending the Empowerment Academy. I'm here today to tell you about my school. At the Empowerment Academy, students are expected to achieve their goals, dreams, and most of all, to become an outstanding citizen. At the Empowerment Academy, as you know, our student, our, thank you. Our school isn't that large, and I think that this is a huge benefit that we have unlike other schools. I say this because teachers have the opportunity to get to know their students and find the most efficient way to teach them and prepare them for their future. Also, at the Empowerment Academy, there's many after-school programs that students love to do and are very motivated to do, such as Homeland Security, National Academic League, Dance Orchestra, and Motivating Minds. At the Empowerment Academy, there's a family-friendly environment, so you'll never feel alone. And also, teachers will push you through to persevere no matter what happens, and they will always prepare you for your future. At the Empowerment Academy, I'm sure I can speak for all students, parents, and teachers when I say that Empowerment Academy is the great place to learn.
Hi, my name is Shannon, and I'm a parent. My daughter, Sanaa, attends the Empowerment Academy. My experience so far at the Empowerment Academy has been great. As I take a look back, guess about seven years ago, when I decided to enroll my daughter, Sanaa, at Empowerment Academy, I knew the school was really special. Going through the enrollment process and understanding what was expected of me as a parent, to ensure that I was able to partner with the school and ensure that my child succeeded was wonderful. My child will go on to have wonderful experiences at the Empowerment Academy with all the teachers being able to individualize for my child based on her ability. Conferencing with me and helping me to understand my child's needs and helping me to apply, helping her to apply those six character pillars, which are trustworthiness, responsibility, respect, fairness, caring, and citizenship. Not just in school, but also while she's engaged in many community events. Some of the events that she, activities that she has been engaged in, so Girl Scouts, robotics competitions, and the Empowerment School Choir, as well as aftercare, just a name of fear. The Empowerment Academy takes a holistic approach on educating not only my daughter, but also empowering me as a parent. I wouldn't usually be able to get up and speak in front of a lot of people, but the Empowerment Academy has really pushed me to be able to do that. They really have empowered me. I've grown from learning at the data nights, as well as the parenting classes that are optional but that were offered, and I enjoyed that, as well as partnering with the Girl Scouts and all the Family Fun Nights. This school is definitely a very, very special school, and I look forward to the many new experiences my daughter will have.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be able to speak to you about the Empowerment Academy. My name is Rochelle Cole. I've been a parent at the school for about five years. My daughter is currently there in the second grade. My son also attended the Empowerment Academy as well. And as a parent, I will say that I thought that being asked to do 50 volunteer hours per family was a lot, but actually, it's been a great experience and I've gotten to know the staff and they're incredibly passionate. My daughter is being challenged in class. She's now reading two grades above her grade level and is being pushed to go even further. Them having the arts in class has helped my son to see that his little drawings, now he wants to become an engineer because he's made a connection between his visual arts class and his, and the science. And, and it's just, just watching these kids and their minds just being challenged and they're growing and they're flourishing, and it's just an incredible place to be. And, and I, just as a parent, I feel so fortunate to have found this space for my kids and just to know that they're going to go out into the world, not only having learned these core subjects, but also now with the confidence they've learned to be able to get up in front of people and perform, and also the idea that they can now take what they're learning now and see their future. That is just an incredible thing as a parent. And I don't think that I've ever been at another school where we've seen that, and we've had my son at a couple places before now, but this, just not ever seeing this before. So, it's really an incredible place, and I'm glad that you're considering to give them a renewal.
Thank you. I just have a question. Is it DeAndre?
Yes, ma'am.
You said you're in eighth grade now. When, how long have you been at the school?
I attended, first, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. When I came to Empowerment Academy, I was in sixth grade.
So, you've been there for, this is your third year?
Yes, ma'am.
It's a very impressive presentation.
Thank you.
Just wanted to note it. Thank you very much. Commissioner Bondima?
Thank you. I would be remiss if I didn't make this statement. I was very pleasantly surprised to see a highly esteemed scholar, Morgan State University professor. You're in extremely good hands to have Dr. Payton, microbiologist, involved in the school. I have to say that, and I couldn't get away without saying it. He is, he is one of the great scholars of Morgan State University, and you're in wonderful hands having him in your presence.
Let the record show. That's fabulous. Question from Commissioner Cannon?
Could you just share maybe one or two highlights? One of our biggest challenges as a system is middle school. And, and when I see highly effective is not only in absolute, but growth in our middle, in our six through eight, it's impressive. So, you're a new principal, you've walked, what, give us a couple, what are things, what are the things that are working? Let's take, let's take literacy.
What has been working tremendously well in literacy? First, before we talk about literacy, we have to talk about the teams and the teams that, the team that I have working together. They make sure that instruction is cross-curricular. So, things that they're experiencing in literacy or in English Lingual Arts is things that they're experiencing also in social studies and in science. So, our team works really well together when addressing interdisciplinary strategies for our students. Also, with literacy is increasing our rigor. We are exposing our students to rigorous texts, and we are requiring them to dig deeper into those texts and analyzing them. And even if they aren't at that level yet, and trust me, we have students who are in special education, and they are able to meet the goal. So, we start there with our rigorous tests and having those high expectations, not only behaviorally but academically, and making sure that they can reach towards those accolades in our school. And we have our teachers and students goal-setting and creating strategies and, and creating objectives around those goals and meeting those goals.
Thanks. Maybe you could consider a favor for me?
Okay.
And invite schools to come see what you're doing. Open your doors when you're at a meeting and you see someone who's maybe not doing as well. Invite them in to see what happens. Nothing, nothing better to see another fellow practitioner doing the work, and you guys are, are obviously doing it. So, it's something to consider.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you very much for that consideration, and I would love to have people come to see what we have to offer at our school. It's a really wonderful place.
And we're about to hear from AFIA in a minute that has a similarly impressive achievement. And I think as a system, we need to kind of up our game on how we take advantage and learn from the practices of, of the schools that are achieving such high academic results. I don't care if it's other charters or traditional schools. We need to get to a place where everybody's achieving at that level, and there's some practices that are, you guys are using all the time, and we, we just, we have to do a better job as a system at tapping into that.
Because they're all our kids.
Absolutely. Commissioner Chinia?
I just wanted to commend all of you in terms of the way that you're articulating what happens at your school from student to parent. If everyone could do that and really understood it that well, I mean, we would do a great job of promoting all of our schools. But congratulations for, for that, because I got a, a really good feel for what you do from each perspective. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. And thanks to the members of your community that came also.
Thank you.
Keep it up.
Thank you.
The next school that I'm going to invite up is AFIA Public Charter School. They're recommended for a five-year renewal. They received effective in academic performance and financial management and governance and highly effective in climate.
My name is Will McKenna. I'm the proud executive director of AFIA Baltimore, which operates AFIA Public Charter School in Bremslane and also Tunbridge. And we're very thankful for the recommendation that Dr. Santalisis has made to the board. And I'm going to turn it over, as Dr. Payton did, to our principal, Ms. Halsey, who's going to lead us forward.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for recommending us for a five-year renewal, Dr. Santalisis. It is my hope that we show you, or through this conversation, show you our ambitious plan that we have created for the next several years. I would like to take a few minutes to outline it for you. Our highest priority will be improving the academic performance of our students. Over the past year, our school community has moved quickly to overhaul all the aspects of our academic program. You asked about the middle school grades and what we're doing. Well, we have adopted a new curriculum, Expeditionary Learning, and Eureka Math for reading and math respectively. We have contracted with Achievement Network to focus on extensive rigorous interim assessments along with professional development, and we are engaged in that intense work related to strategic planning and progress monitoring. All of this work is underway at AFIA currently, and we will continue our efforts with organization, thoughtfulness, and determination. We will also continue to enhance our school's culture and climate. I'll move this forward, I'm sorry. We will also continue to enhance our school's culture and climate, an area of excellence at our school. The middle school grades, as you stated earlier, is perhaps the hardest grades for, for, for students. We are determined to continue growing our program so it provides opportunities for our students and families to positively engage in our school. One example of a continue in, continued innovation in this area is the creation of a partnership with Towson. And it's, it's called the AFIA Wellness Ambassadors Program, and as we like to call it, AWOP. And this program provides, uh, uh, opportunity for AFIA families and students to join with Towson students and professors, as well as the other community partners, to learn about fitness, food, and wellness on a monthly basis. If you're curious about AWOP, please stop by AFIA at five-thirty on Thursday so that you can participate in some of the rigorous, intensive work. We have our Director of Athletics at, um, Mr. Mike Morgan, who's here, and he is one of the, the people who are, who's engaged in this work. And they take our families through a lot of, um, workouts and healthy eating, and we provide them with bags to go home to create healthy meals at home.
And if I can, this Thursday, it's, the, the theme is family fitness, fun, and fajitas. So, that's the, the healthy option. If anyone is available, feel free, stop by.
We also have a family behind us, Bria Williams, who is a eighth grader, a current eighth grader, and Ms. Brenna Williams, who is a parent at AFIA, who they participate in this program. They will tell you when they get home that in the evenings, they drop out. They, by the time they get home, they go to sleep, and the next day, Bria comes in and says, "I'm so sore from all of the work we did last night." So, this is a good way for us to connect the community, connect the families, and also to connect the school. Um, and over time, these families will become wellness ambassadors, recruiting other families, both at AFIA Baltimore and around the city to jo- join this effort. A final area that we're committed to growing and enhancing is our engagement in Bel Air Edison. You hear Bel Air Edison in, in the, on the news often, but you don't hear about the good things that's happening within the schools in Bel Air Edison. AFIA is a great place to be. We also have our sister school where we have Dia Hafiz, who's the principal of Brimslane behind us, and we want to connect the two schools. We do believe that the key to AFIA's future is finding ways to increase the number of students who enter our school, who begin the mi- their middle grades on or above grade level. Bria is an example. She went to Brimslane, um, and she was a pre-K student, and she went through Brimslane and she came to AFIA, and now she is, we did her composite score today, and I am so pleased to say that Bria is, has a seven thirty-seven, which means she can go to whatever high school she chooses, and I'm really proud of her. I'm really proud of her. And so, that's the connection. We want to connect Brimslane and AFIA to show that if we have good instruction, if we have students who, if we have cohesiveness between the two schools, we can strengthen, strengthen our curriculum and strengthen the bridge between the schools academically, socially, and emotionally. Again, I would like to thank you for your support of and confidence in our school. We hope that the board accepts the CEO's recommendation about AFIA, and we are more than happy to take questions at this time. Thank you.
Questions from the board? Awesome. Nice job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thanks to the members of the community that came.
The next school community I'm gonna invite up is Baltimore International Academy. Um, they're recommended for a five-year renewal. Um, they received affective in academic performance, climate, um, and highly effective in financial management and governance.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, Dr. Santalisis, good, good evening. We are here tonight, um, with the principal, Madam LaCunia, the IP Coordinator, Madam Cobb, and the Board Chair.
Could you pull the microphone a little closer? Thank you.
BIA was privileged to be invited la- uh, in September to present, uh, at the CEO's section. We came with a busload of students and many parents, and we shared, um, what BIA is about. And shortly after that, the Board Chair and Commission, some Commissioners came to our school to visit. So, you have seen BIA, you've heard from our students, the best ambassadors, who spoke unprepared to you, and also, you came and you saw. Tonight, our main purpose for coming is to thank you for your faith in the school and, and Dr. Santalisis' belief, and your belief and support of the school, and also to let you know that our, our goal of creating or preparing global citizens, uh, is well off. We are not there yet. We still have room to grow, but we are making strides in preparing Baltimore City's students to be prepared for our ever-changing global economy. And so, our main purpose again is to thank you and to answer any questions that you may have. And if anyone of my colleagues wants to say anything, they're free to say so.
I don't necessarily have a question, but having just done this visit recently, I can honestly say that I, I've, I've was a member of the advisory board that recommended the opening of the school, and I've always read the reports and, but I was completely unprepared for what it would be like to sit in a classroom with second-grade students who were in an animated conversation in Arabic. I, I was just completely unprepared for that experience. Um, and in this day, in this world today, uh, I was, i- it was a, it was an emotional experience to, to see that. So, I, I, I really appreciated it, and thank you. Any other thoughts, questions, comments?
Can I make a quick comment? I just want to say that when you all came to visit, we thought we'd show you two or three classes, but they kept saying, "Well, we want to see this, and we want to see this." So, when you walked in, they were not prepared to see you. You walked into the real-life situation of our daily routine.
Yeah, there was no way to stage that because
No.
Once you saw the, once you saw the math class in Russian, you're like, "Well, now I want to see it in Chinese." All right, there's gotta be an Arabic. I mean, it was crazy. Really great.
By the time you got Arabic, you say, "I'm walking out, you know, I'm lost," I remember.
So, I, we appreciate that you came, uh, and, um, encourage you to keep up the good work, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Merci.
Shukran.
I wish I could remember. I wish.
Keep going.
Go, say something.
Si, si.
Re bien.
Um, the next school, um, we're, um, they're gonna invite up is Patterson Park Public Charter School. Um, they received a highly effective in academic performance and climate, and an effective in financial management and governance. I think we might need to pause. They might not be in the room yet. Ah, here they come. Okay.
Nice to see you.
Yeah, great to see you. Um, good evening, everybody. I'm Jane Lynn Infelter, and I'm the Executive Director of Patterson Park Public Charter School.
Chad Kramer. I'm the principal. I'm also a parent of three children at the school.
I'm Sarah Sandoval-Moapatra. I'm the Board Chair for Patterson Park Public Charter School.
So, we wanted to begin tonight by just thanking the review team for the recommendation of a five-year renewal. Um, we're very eager to continue serving children and families for the next five years. And we thought we'd begin by covering just a few highlights from our application and telling you a little bit about our school if you don't already know. Um, so Patterson Park Public Charter School, our vision is lifelong learners, healthy families, and strong neighborhoods. And our mission is to provide a community-centered learning environment that values diversity and embraces a whole-child approach to develop well-educated citizens. We currently have seven hundred students, and we're located in southeast Baltimore. Couple highlights from our application and from the last five years. As you've already heard, we scored highly effective in academic achievement, highly effective in school climate, and effective in governance. Our scores for the park exam, which were instituted in this last, uh, contract cycle, have, um, been strong when compared to city schools overall, and eighty-five to ninety percent of our graduates are qualifying for the city's entrance criteria high schools. Um, when it comes to school climate, our enrollment has grown from six hundred and fifty to over seven hundred. During the course of the last contract, our responses from students, families, and staff members on the school survey have increased significantly um, and resulted in very low attrition. Last year, we saw five percent student attrition, um, and high teacher retention ranging from eighty-eight percent to a hundred percent some years. On the governance front, we've also managed major changes in leadership, both at the executive director level, assistant principal level, and board chair level. Um, and we've been able to present and manage a balanced budget, including some pretty complex bond initiatives on our facility in the midst of a really challenging financial environment that you all know about. So, while we're proud of these things and we're proud of where we are, we also see opportunities and we have a level of clarity about what it's gonna take to live out our vision in the years to come. Um, so in the years ahead, we're really focused on three things: achievement, equity, and a bright future. On the achievement front, we want to make sure that we see a ten percent gain in ELA in math on the park scores, but that we do that in a way that is true a- um, and operates with fidelity to our mission and our vision of educating the whole child. Um, we also acknowledge that there is disparities in achievement. Um, we have the unique, uh, kind of position of being a relatively diverse school in Baltimore City. Um, and so, we're very aware of that. We're evaluating our practices currently, um, working with associated black charities, and trying to institute best practices to make sure that every single child, regardless of their racial or socioeconomic background, receives a great education. And then on the bright future front, we really want to make sure that we're meeting the demands of prospective PPPCS families. We have a waitlist of over five hundred children, um, and we see the opportunity for growth. And so, our board is excited to work with you all, um, and see how we can expand opportunities for more children and more families to receive a PPPCS education. Um, with that, I will stop there, um, and answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Jane, um, for the work that y'all are doing. Chad, I can't remember your name.
Sarah.
Sarah. Um, sorry about that. Uh, I'm glad you mentioned, uh, the desire to address the achievement gap, because there, um, y'all really have kind of a unique opportunity, maybe only shared by some of the other schools in southwest Baltimore. Excuse me, southeast Baltimore. So, i- i- if you, either you or, or Chad could just say a word, um, the ELA gap of fifty-five points between white students and African-American and the forty-six-point gap between white and Latino students, I mean, that, those are, that's a substantial, and I, I'm sure, it's all clearly on your screen, you referenced it. Could you just say a little bit about what you're think, doing or thinking about doing to address that? Because you have a really unique opportunity here, given the, the population that you're serving.
I agree, and it's something that we've really had to dive deep into it. So, when we think about each of the subgroups we've worked with, we were very fortunate last year to get a focus grant, um, to work specifically with our English language learners, which led us to go and take a look at practices at places within the city where it seems successful, like Lakeland, for instance. And some of the practice that we took away from that included are the work they did on fluency and intense tutoring, which are things that we've integrated for this year itself. Uh, when we take a look at how our students who are marked as ED or economically disadvantaged, uh, we've been taking best practices for years around community schools to make sure that there is research-based, uh, or research-driven interventions we're doing after school and during the summer programs. Uh, we've continued to do that despite the challenges that we faced financially. Um, much of that has been done by doing fundraising from outside sources, too. And finally, when we speak about, uh, achievement with African-American students, that's where that partnership with, with ABC has really become critical for us. Because despite our best intentions to use, uh, the resources that we know, uh, that are in the literature that we review, we knew we needed to do something more. So, we're excited to assess what we're doing as a program itself, kind of dive deep into our own practice, and then from there, be able to take a look at some exemplars of, uh, city programs that are doing a much better job than we are, but then also to apply other best practices as that partnership develops.
Thank you for, for that thoughtful response, and I just want to sort of flag, you know, here is another reference to learning from another community, charter school, learning from a traditional school. And as a district, I mean, we're seeing that, we have the, the model that you put in place this year with Commodore John Rogers. I think as, as, as much as we can, either informally or formally, set up these relationships between schools so that, that we become sort of self, internal consulting teams to each other, because clearly, there's some things that you can teach others, but there's a couple areas where you clearly could learn from others.
We, district personnel in yesterday, and that's part of what
I'm sorry, you did?
We, we had district personnel in yesterday. Part of what we're doing is saying, this is the outcomes that we're seeing, the research we're doing, sharing that, both to validate it, but also to find out where we can work together and, uh, you know, find those best practices that have been working right here in Baltimore City.
And specifically, they were looking at our fourth and fifth grade ELA scores because they were significantly high. So, we had the team in watching those classrooms.
Fabulous. Fabulous. Other questions, comments? Thanks for taking the time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you.
The last school that, uh, we were anticipating hearing from hasn't signed in. Um, we're a little bit ahead of schedule, um, in, in terms of the time, but I think, I think we're pretty much, um, uh, done with the work section, so.
So, I think we're, uh, we're not anticipating that Crossroads is going to be here. We, we are ahead of schedule, so I think what I'd like to do is, boy, we are ahead of schedule.
This is the first.
But people are out there, so, um, first of all, as it relates to Crossroads, if they do show up, whatever part of the meeting we're in, whichever meeting we're in, we, we will figure out a way to create the space to accommodate them. I don't want to penalize them if they have something they'd like to say to us. If, if there are members of the general public here, what I'd like to propose is that we take a ten-minute break. We're gonna, uh, vote to adjourn this meeting. We'll come back in ten minutes and we'll get started. Um, and because of the, you know, the timing differential, we'll accommodate people as they come. But I, Angela, if you could alert us to the arrival of anybody from Crossroads, they may not come, and that's fine, and city neighbors, but we'll, we'll pause if we need to.
Okay. Thank you.
So, with that, can I have a motion to adjourn the, the, this portion of the presentations? Moved by Commissioner Highcupboard? Are you second, seconding by, eager beaver, seconded by Commissioner Cannon? All in favor? Uh, Commissioners Berkeley, Hassan, Highcupboard, Cannon, Kashani, Chinia, Frank, Von Dima. Eight approve, one absent. Um, we are gonna take a ten-minute break. Thank you.
At six-thirty-five.